Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a special workshop of the Highland Village City Council on Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is Thursday, June the 30th, and the meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Let the record show all council members are in attendance with the exception of Councilman Kix Miller and Councilman Feaster. Councilman Feaster did notify he would be running a little late tonight. So I've called the meeting in order for City Council. Mr. Skinner, would you like to call the meeting order for P&amp;Z?
Yes, sir, I will. I'll call the meeting to order for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and please let the record show that all commissioners are present.
Thank you, sir. Before we get started, I just want to make a few announcements. The workshop for tonight is informational only. There will be no action taken by City Council or the Planning and Zoning Commission this evening. With that, I ask everyone to be respectful of others during tonight's workshop. Please, no yelling, clapping, or similar disruptions will be allowed. Seating is limited, and we do have overflow in the training room where you can watch on a big screen. And tonight's meeting is also being streamed through HighlandVillage.org/HVTV, Frontier Channel 43, and the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com/HighlandVillageTX. The meeting is also being recorded and will be available for on-demand viewing on the city's website and the YouTube channel. We provided the community the opportunity to submit questions for the presenter and for the city to address. There were many good questions, and we appreciate the thought and effort put into submitting these questions. The city will retain all questions, some of which are best explored and answered if an application is made. The majority of our community's questions for the city center on a few specific things that I'd like to address right now. We are nearly at the halfway point of the Our Village, Our Vision project. Community input is an important part of the project, which is why the open house and online engagement opportunities took place at the beginning of the project. Several other pieces of input are included in the project. McAdams and city staff are completing meetings with the business and property owners in the opportunity areas and along the 407 corridor to hear what they envision for their properties in the short and the long term. A statically Valid Survey of our residences is concluding this month. The market analysis of the opportunity areas is complete and was part of the information provided in community input activities. All of this information, the community input findings, the property owner input, resident survey, and market analysis will be used by McAdams to develop the proposed plans. Council, city staff, and the community will have the opportunity to view those plans and provide feedback before they are finalized. Tech Dot manages the FM 407 and FM 2499 roadways. Tech Dot's planning documents currently show traffic has not met their capacity triggers. FM 407 is at ultimate build. Tech Dot's planning for FM 407 traffic accounted for approximately 35,000 cars, and it is currently at 25,000. FM 2499 Phase 4, which is not funded at this time, has a two-lane expansion that will be constructed sometime in the future. FM 2499 is designed for 43,000 cars and is currently at approximately 30,000. Flower Mound has hired an engineering consultant to design dual-left-turn lanes in all directions at the intersection of 2499 and 407. They're currently in the survey and site plan phase, and 30% of plans are expected for review late this summer. And as a side note, I met with Mayor Gilmore and France this morning for breakfast, and one of the things we talked about was that intersection. And Mayor France said they expect to be able to start construction on those turn lanes next year, or I think he said 2024. City water and sewer systems were designed to provide for our max build-out population of about 18,000 people. The city will work with future developments to ensure there is capacity in the city water and wastewater systems, and if they require upgrades to the various portions of our systems. Today's workshop with P&amp;Z and council is for the owner of the shops at Highland Village to present to us a proposal for their property. As the property owner, they have the right, just as any of you do for your properties, to present a proposal for consideration by the city, P&amp;Z, and council. No formal submission or application has been made to the city. No formal action, approval, or denial will take place at this workshop. With that, item three on the agenda is to receive a presentation and discuss possible development of property at the shops of Highland Village located at 1701 Shoal Creek. Mr. Pogue.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, planning and zoning. We really appreciate y'all coming out today and spending your time on a Thursday evening right before holiday weekend to listen to us. We've been working on this for quite a while. We started meeting with people back in October with an HOA meeting and several of you and several of the planning and zoning to start gathering thoughts and ideas about what we were anticipating and thinking about at the shops. And so that's why we're here today, because we have evolved over time, and so now we have a vision for what we anticipate moving forward. So I am Josh Pogue. I should have started with that, with Pogue Shopping Centers. We are the manager of the shops at Highland Village. We took over in January 2020, thankfully, right before COVID. And so we had some ideas about what we thought was going to happen with the shops in 2020, 2021, and a lot of that got put on hold. But that's where we also took the time during that pause in the retail world, and frankly, the world at large, to really work on our vision for what we thought for the future. So I'll start, and then we'll have several other team members that will make parts of the presentation today. And so I think the presentation will last 20 to 30 minutes long, and then we'll open it up for Q&amp;A for everybody to ask any question they want. We're here to be as open as possible and take feedback, because who knows, maybe we have additional adjustments, and I mean, we just want to hear what you think, what others think. And we did get a copy of some of those questions from the public so that we can answer some of those, and a lot of them, as you addressed, were more for the city than for us. So I appreciate you taking care of some of those. So first of all, I took a look at where we've been and where we're going, just on the retail side, because that's my background. I focus on retail. I've done a couple of McShuse projects that have residential in them, but I have not been responsible for the residential. Multifamily is not my expertise. I have 25 years of history in the retail world, in the lifestyle centers specifically. So when you look at the companies that have closed, the retailers that have closed over the last five years at the shops at Highland Village, you'll notice a trend. New York &amp; Company, Justice, Ann Taylor, Charming Charlie, Janie and Jack, Delia's, Children's Place, Gymboree, Coldwater Creek, Jose Bank. 100% of those are fashion tenants. They sell clothes. And so when I started in the business back in the late 90s, the focus was on the clothing industry. And frankly, until probably about 2012, clothing dominated the lifestyle center industry. But then e-commerce, I mean, started expanding like crazy. People were able to buy clothing online, and a lot of these retailers are old-line retailers that have not succeeded. Some don't even exist anymore. I mean, like Coldwater Creek, and I don't think Delia's exists at all anymore. And New York &amp; Company, Ann Taylor, has a handful of stores out there, but they're shells of what they used to be. So then I also looked at what the retail today is, and Sip 'n Savor is a great example of that. And that's a restaurant that y'all may know is under construction now. Will open up this fall, and it's far on the table. It's a restaurant, and the restaurants at Highland Village are very important for our future. When we first developed the lifestyle center concept in the late 90s, or actually, my dad and his partner developed it in the late 80s, it was about the experience for the consumer. And so even at that early date, they focus on restaurants, because restaurants create culture. We sit around the table, and we talk to each other at dinner. It's a way to catch up with friends. And as restaurants have progressed over time, you think about it, the late 80s was Applebee's, Ruby Tuesday's, then you had the 90s and 2000s, which may have been the PF chains and the Bravo, Barrio, I mean, that kind of stuff, the chains that were very successful and high-quality. But then those started falling out of favor, and what is more dominant now are the chef-driven concepts, individual concepts that can cater to their individual environment, their individual community, rather than trying to be the same thing to everybody. There are still extremely successful chain restaurants, but we tended to focus on the more locally-driven concepts of late. So these are the concepts that have opened over the last five years. Sip 'n Savor, I mean, opening up this fall, Brass Tap, Lambo's, La Merah, Madison Salons, Neon Elephant, Buckle, Kendra Scott, Buff City Slope, Tangerine Salon. You'll notice another trend. Only one of those is a fashion tenant. All the rest of those are services. There are, I mean, Kendra Scott being a jeweler, Lambo's, and Brass Tap and Sip 'n Savor being the restaurants. So it's about food and beverage. It's about services. It's about experience, the stuff that you can't readily get online. And so that's our competition today, is what people can do online because of the ease of access of getting goods online. So just real quick, the numbers on the left are hard to see, but this is a traffic, five-year traffic pattern for the shops at Highland Village. So in 2018, so obviously prior to COVID, we were at about four and a half million visitors a year. In 2019, we dropped a little bit, maybe 4.4 million. 2020, obviously devastating with COVID, we dropped down to about 3.2 million. In 2021, we got back to over 4 million. So we're heading in the right direction. Traffic is coming back, but we are still below where we were in 2018 and 19. So traffic has diminished over time at the shops at Highland Village. So this is a slide that I wanted to take you through, because this is why we focus on the evolution of our properties. We're constantly looking at how to evolve our properties to make sure they stay relevant in today's society. So when this property opened in 2007, e-commerce made up 3.4% of total retail sales. Today, that's four times, 13.2. So it's not just that e-commerce has grown, it's grown exponentially. So it now makes up 13.2% of total retail sales, and I made sure I used 2021 numbers because 2020 numbers were actually much higher than that. But that was because of COVID, and so e-commerce sales came back down in 2021. 2007, the first iPhone debuted. Now we're up to iPhone 13. And so what that matters, why that matters, is that prior to the iPhone, there was no e-commerce on your handheld. Now, that's the fastest-growing segment, is buying, people buying stuff on their iPhones. And so the dramatic change that the iPhone has made over the last 14 years and continues to make is exceptional to our business. Amazon sales were 14.8 billion last year, 469 billion, 30 times the size of where they were in 2007. So that just shows once again what's happened. Now, the last two relate to the theater specifically. Netflix debuted in 2007. Today, they have 220 million subscribers. The U.S. movie box office in 2007, in real numbers, not inflated, adjusted, was 9.6 billion. The U.S. movie box office in 2020, or 21, because the movie theaters were still shut down for the most part, were 4.5 billion. Now they're expected to grow to 7 billion in 2022. And so that's actually, obviously, a much bigger increase, but in 2019, the number was 11.6 billion. So we're down about 40% from where the movie box office was in 2019. So I've told this story, and so this isn't anything that's private, but when we took over the property, we knew that the lease with AMC was coming up at the end of this year, end of 2022. And so we talked to the owners, AEW, and we said, "Look, AMC is not going to last. If they want to stay in the property, they're going to ask for a substantial reduction in rent. And if we want the best modern movie theater, they're not going to be willing to invest, and we'd have to put millions of dollars into it." And so I said, "We need to start anticipating," and I say, "I," it was really my team. It was a vision group that came together and said, "We need to look at what we could do on the site if AMC closes." And so that's where the first germ of the idea with the multifamily came up. So flash forward, and when COVID hit, the movie theaters were devastated, as you can imagine. I mean, they just, they couldn't open. There was no film coming out to them, and at that point, we just were certain that AMC was going to close. Now, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, the whole Robin Hood thing happened online, where a community basically bought up the stock prices of AMC and GameStop and drove their stock price somewhere around $5 a share to $55 a share. And every landlord in the company rejoiced, because suddenly AMC had capital that they could pay the rent and survive the downturn. So they have steadily been doing better, and I'll tell you, like, I mean, this is more anecdotal, maybe more in the weeds than you want to know, but Bond, James Bond, last October, was the first movie that really started saving the movie theater industry again. People started going back to the movie theaters last fall. James Bond did fairly well. But really, we call Spider-Man as the movie that saved the industry, because Spider-Man opened in December of 2021 and killed it. And so our movie theaters actually did better in December of 2019, or 2021 than they did December of 2019 across the country. But January, February, March were really weak months again, because there was no new film that was coming out, no new good film coming out. But then April, Doctor Strange, I mean, May, June, we've had some really good film with Top Gun, Jurassic Park. I mean, Thor comes out next week. I mean, so it's the comic book industry, but I mean, like, it's, like, our summer is looking really positive. But then you can mark on your calendar, because there's not a lot of good releases that are coming up in September, October, November. And December, there's a handful of good films coming out. So it's this ride in the way that we're doing with the movie theater industry. I will tell you that since we originally said, "Okay, AMC is not going to be able to stay," because we didn't think that they'd financially be solvent, we have started working. It turned from an idea where we started negotiating with them and saying, "Okay, this is something that we think we can work through," to now we're at the point where we have a handshake with them. So they actually want to stay in the property. Now, we are having to take a large financial hit in order to keep them in the property, to reduce their rent to stay in the property, but we think we have a deal for the long term. So that affects what we presented, because when we first started looking at this back in October, or actually, we'd looked at it before October, but presented in October, we had thought that the AMC would go away. So now we started looking at it, okay, what happens, and what can we design to evolve the center but to keep the AMC in place? So the other thing I want to look at is just some of the questions I've been, I've had are what are the, what about, what's going on elsewhere? What's the competition in the market? And so I asked Ravi, our property manager, general manager, to take a look and offer suggestions of what else is going on. And some of these may be familiar to you, some may be on the drawing board, but all of these are mixed-use projects that are happening in the surrounding area. All of them opening restaurants, retail, residential, some with hotels, some with office, mixing the uses, because that's what the evolution of the lifestyle center has become. When the original developer developed the shops at Highland Village, they were intelligent to put office in the property, but a lot of our projects now have hotels and the multifamily. And so that's just the evolution of the lifestyle center over time. So these are just some of the projects that are either existing and offer competition. I mean, I was talking to one gentleman today who was talking about the restaurants at Lakeside doing more than double what our restaurants do at our project. And a lot of that is attributed to the experience that they've created with the constant traffic from all the residential in the area. So another thing that I've been asked about is just the view that the shops at Highland Village is this, I mean, quaint, small project for just the Highland Village community. And the reality is, it's got a much wider draw than just Highland Village. And that should be appreciated, because fact is that that draws a lot of people and a lot of tax dollars from outside of Highland Village into the city of Highland Village. And so when you look at these numbers, about 40% of our traffic comes within a three-mile radius, and 60% comes from outside that three-mile radius. So a majority of our customers come from outside the three-mile radius of the project. So with all that being said, let me think. Yeah, so I think I've covered everything that I wanted to cover, but with all that being said, it's one thing to hear from me. I've been on the project for a couple of years. I've been working on the project and visioning this. But we wanted to bring Sean Chatlos. And Sean is with AEW, and AEW is the pension fund manager that oversees the ownership of the asset. So he's the one that I talk to on a regular basis about what the vision for the center should be, and where the leasing should go, and what kind of deals we can make, and all that kind of stuff. So versus hearing it just from me, I wanted to bring Sean and introduce himself and to talk about AEW and the project. So Sean.
Thanks, all. First, thanks, everyone, for the time today. Again, you know, echo Josh's comments there. This asset is really important to us. You know, my name is Sean Chatlos. Work for AEW Capital, and we own this shopping center. Specifically, you know, I think it goes without mentioning, you know, this is a big asset, you know, where we each year spend millions of dollars to operate. It's really with the partnership of the city council, shops at Highland Village, that make this happen. And we do appreciate the business and support of the shops over these years. We bought this center back in 2014 on behalf of a pension fund, and since that time, we've, you know, spent additional tens of millions of dollars to attract and retain high-quality tenants that deliver the vision that Josh just mentioned. I've had fortunate experience of working on the asset for the majority of that time, and I can speak that, you know, it has had its ups and downs. You know, I think COVID and the pandemic really sort of highlighted the reasons why we need to make a pivot. And as Josh mentioned, you know, I think we're looking at this collaboratively with, you know, the city and the community at large to try to better serve them. So it's a job and responsibility we take very seriously. The stakes are very high, and ultimately, for our client and our investor, you know, we're very focused on delivering, you know, high-quality, functioning property that is future-proof. you know, high-quality functioning property that is future-proof, and that's really the focus of this meeting today. You know, there's, before, you know, the rest of the slides will go over a little bit more detail on that, but, you know, this is probably the first time you might have heard of my company, AEW, so I thought I'd use the time now to briefly give an overview of our portfolio and our experience. AEW is a global real estate asset manager. We have a global network across essentially three different hubs here in Europe, Asia, and North America. We work with hundreds of clients, mainly large institutions, looking to invest in real estate across the country and really across the globe. I am Boston-based, and for this client, they're actually Boston-based as well. But when I heard there was a workshop and a working session here, I definitely wanted to make sure I had the opportunity to speak in front of you all. In total, it's close to $100 billion of assets. We are one of the biggest real estate investors in the whole world, and we have over 40 years of experience. And you don't gain 40 years of experience managing that amount of money without making not just the right decisions to invest, but being proactive to pivot and deliver results for the clients. So we've been very fortunate to deliver that performance. It's, again, something we take very seriously, and we're very focused on the future to retain that. Just a little bit of a composition of the $94 billion. You know, what we do as a bread and butter, our core investments, those are investments that we see as holding for over 10 years. These are long-term commitments with communities. These are hand-in-hand decisions to figure out the best real estate value we can deliver, and that is a partnership with our investors and local communities and product. And again, something we take very seriously on our commitments. In terms of overall sort of product types, we are very, very much a global player. We invest in product types across product type spectrums and risk. These are high-quality shopping centers, office buildings, industrial sites, you know, senior living facilities across the country and globe. This is just an excerpt of visuals to help, you know, demonstrate the quality. Specific to North America, you know, we have over $40 billion of assets. To Josh's expertise in retail, you know, we partner with managers such as Josh and his team to operate these shopping centers. We have in total, for retail, 12.8, 12.7 million square feet, which is about $5 billion of assets. Specific in Texas, across all of our assets is close to $4 billion, which a lot of it is in the DFW area. You know, so we absolutely bring a lot of expertise to operating these shopping centers. We bring a lot of breadth and expertise in managing across shoppings, across all product types. That includes, you know, mixed developments. And Josh is right to point out that we are seeing nationally and at global level, the desire to move to mixed-use developments, the desire to facilitate living, working, and shopping in a very cohesive way, really strong trends that we need to be thinking of in a, in a future-proofing mindset. Back to the slide about sort of our risk spectrum, you know, the Shops at Highland Village are a core asset for us. It is a core pension fund looking for stability of the asset. As you can imagine during COVID, when the shopping center was being shut down, stores, you know, we're being, we're telling employees to go home and we'll see what happens in a couple of weeks or months. Very concerning time to be a real estate operator. I'm very proud to say that with Josh's team and myself, you know, we worked with almost every single tenant of the shopping center to provide relief and make sure that they kept the doors open when we came back to business. You know, I think the success we've seen in '21 and into '22 and just how vibrant the community is around here, it's been really awesome to see, you know, everyone pitching in and helping the community at large. So go to the next slide, just on our investment process. We, with our, our experience, we see a lot of deals. We are very selective in our risk, and we are very selective in funding capital. For each deal that we see, about 10% goes through our screening process as investable ideas. You know, Shops of Highland Village was an investable idea for us. I'm proud of that. You know, we love the shops, we love what we're doing at the center. We absolutely have had tough times, but we see a really bright future in what we can do here. Our client does not like to accept a lot of risk. You know, these are supposed to be stable assets. When you're talking about transformational changes, as Josh mentioned, about the theaters and, you know, changes to the retail landscape, we need to be thinking about holistically future-proofing the assets. That's, that's what we do. That's why we work with a team here to figure that out. That's why we work with the cities in the future visions, what are the priorities, to figure that out. And it's something we take very seriously for our screening process and putting additional money to work. Just to be clear, this would be a very big commitment for us to move forward with the deals that we're laying out here today. It would be tens of millions of dollars in additional money we'd be putting to work to build this development, including new jobs, tax city funding from tax revenues, and the total impact the community, I think, would be helpful from a cohesiveness to the shopping center. You know, based on our experience and based on our studies, you know, we would not be here today unless we thought that was true. On top of our screening process too, we also have been working with a number of multifamily developers to evaluate this proposal. In total, it was almost 10 different multifamily developers, and we led a screening process to evaluate what we thought, based on the quality of the product, based on the pipeline of deals, based on track record, you know, who was the right party to be working with. We have selected Presidium, which Mark has represented here, and he's going to go over the next couple of slides where we are in that process. Again, thank you guys for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, Chairman Skinner, and P&amp;Z members. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We know this is contentious. We got a nice crowd here to support our development. I think I probably should have went before Sean because our numbers are going to look dwarf compared to the numbers you're doing. But I'm Mark Farrell. I'm the president of development for the Presidium Group. Presidium Group is close to 20 years old. It's a Texas-based company with corporate headquarters in Dallas and in Austin. We have over $2 billion on our assets, it's growing every day, 400 employees, 80 assets, over 13,000 apartments, and we have four large master planned communities in Austin. This kind of gives you an idea of our footprint. You can see we're in Florida, you see Jacksonville, we're also in Tampa. We've acquired one site, we have four sites under contract, we're up in Atlanta, Portland, Maine. We've got all Texas covered, Santa Fe and Phoenix. You can see we have a pipeline at close to 10,000 units. So what I wanted to do, let me just step back. Presidium, we, we were pretty much a company doing acquisition and rehabs, and we acquired about 20,000 apartments. And probably five years ago, we kind of flipped the platform because the acquisition was getting more expensive, and it made more sense to build than to buy something old that's overpriced and then try to fix it up and hope to sell it. Well, I joined the company three and a half years ago. I, I partnered with the owners in Florida, that's how we got in Jacksonville. And we had a, we hit it, we hit a home run. We did a great job. I've been in the business since '87, developed over 10,000, probably close to 15,000 apartments. We, we had a very successful development there. They asked me to come out here and join the company. And since then, we've been quite busy. I mean, we've already developed 20, in the last three and a half years, about 2,500 apartments. We have about 25 under construction, and we'll probably close on another 2,000 by the end of the year, provided construction costs and interest rates don't screw everything out. But that's where we're going. When I came to the company, it just, I said, if my name's going to be on it, it better be good. And so I started with, we're going to start branding our apartments. So everything we do has Presidium blank. Presidium Town Center, Presidium Hill Street, Presidium Chase Hill, Presidium Frisco, whatever it is, we're going to put our name front and center there so people know who did it. And if it's bad, they're going to know who did it. And if it's good, they're going to know who did it. And our thought is, if we do a real good job, we're going to get more investors, more lenders, and be more successful. So that's my goal. That's my direction to our team, is to make the best product out there. So when we look at a site, and every site is different, every market's different, every demographic is different, but what we do is I bring my team, the architects, engineers, ID, interior designers, and we canvass the market. We do a five, like a five-mile ring, and let's look at the competitive set, and let's make it better. And that's what we do. It's a lot easier developing when you're the best in the market as opposed to coming into the middle. And that's what we're going to do. And that's our thoughts, if we're lucky enough, if we're able to work something out, that we will build without question the nicest apartment in this area, hands down, guaranteed. My name's on it, it's going to be the best. So what, what I wanted to do is bring some slides of some product that we've done, and this will be similar to what we would propose. Shows you an amenity area, this is in Flori, this is the Jacksonville deal that I got associated with Presidium. And you can see the double-sided fireplace, the trellis has plexi up there, see-through so you can sit out there in the rain, the zero-edge pool. This is another project in Jacksonville. Again, you can see the zero-edge pool, the modern design. This is one of the clubroom spaces that we have. You can see we have the pool tables, the shuffleboards. Can't see everything up there, but there's a bar that leads out to a second-story balcony porch. We typically, in this case here, we won't have it, but we typically like to have at least an 18-foot in-depth, 30-foot-wide balcony that comes down into the, the pool area. We like to blow out the gyms, minimum 2,000 square feet. In this case here, it's a two-story. And we think this, we call this eye candy. You know, this is an easy way to lease a unit. People think, I'm finally going to get in shape, I'm finally going to be able to work out. And people like seeing this, and they don't have to join a club. But this, this has all the modern equipment, we're spending at least $150,000 on equipment. And whatever the latest and greatest, we tell the team, buy it. This shows a passive courtyard. So a lot of times, and we would have this in the development that we're proposing, we have two courtyards. Whenever you have like a wrap product with a, with a garage, you're wrapping the garage with units, and then it, it offers some opportunities to have courtyards. A lot of times, you have two courtyards or three courtyards. Well, the product that we're proposing would have two courtyards. We have an active courtyard, which has the pool, which has the cabanas, which has the zero-edge pools, we have the fire pits, we have ping pong. And the passive courtyard would be more like this. And this would be something similar that we would have in our second courtyard. And you can see, there's hammocks, there's gathering spots, places outdoors where you can work. You can see how this, this project's in Austin, how we landscaped the garage, again, to soften This is down in, this is Chase Hill, this is down in San Antonio. We're probably 75% leased up. This is the clubhouse. I mean, this is as good as it gets. You can see it's a two, two-level pool, there's a pool area at the bottom, top, but this is, this is the type of quality, because there was an apartment that had a pool that I've never seen before. And I told our landscape architect, make it better. This is what we got. We were over budget, but, I mean, it's stunning. But that's, that's the type of stuff we do, make it better. He jumbo-sized it. That's looking over La Quintera, we're sitting on the hill, hole number one, and we were looking down the fairway. This is right in Frisco. This is right up, right up the street here, near the soccer stadium. This is an interesting site, about 370 units. It's a city block, they required us to have three different facades. This has three courtyards. This, this is going to be stunning when it's done. But again, that Frisco area has wonderful apartments, high level, we said, make it better. Here's our pool area. It looks like something out of Vegas. But that's, and that's one of our courtyards. But again, that's what we would plan, the quality that we would bring to the neighborhood. I know there's concerns talking about apartments. Well, yeah, they are apartments, but they're different. They're not the apartments that we grew up in. These are the apartments my four kids are living in now, and they're enjoying this. So we'll talk about the design, what we're proposing, next. And before we do that, just, just some thoughts, some benefits to the community. And we're having this conversation with some of the largest mall owners in the country. We're probably going to strike a deal in Maine with a national developer to redo, repurpose a JCPenney, then also a Sears, could be a four-phase project. We're, we're talking to a group in DC about doing something. These centers, these mall lifestyle centers, if they were not developed with apartments, they're bringing apartments in. This is an incredible turbocharge to these centers. We expect the residents that are living there to make $80,000 and above. There'll be people making $300,000, $400,000. That's who we expect living here. And they're going to bring their wallets, they eat three meals a day out, they don't cook. So we think, you know, if I'm a retailer in the shops, I'm like, oh my God, how better could it be? We were talking about getting 60% of the people from three miles out. We're going to bring people, and they're going to live on site. Are you kidding me? They're going to walk to the shops? They're not going to drive cars, they're not going to generate any traffic coming to the shop, excuse me? So it, we think it's a wonderful advantage there. And that increases the viability of the tenants. Okay, we've heard in our last community meeting, you know, when are you going to get better tenants, and where are the, about the restaurants, and this and that? This type of stuff does that. This transforms the center. You have 280 apartments there, luxury apartments, with 25 to 42-year-olds living there that are spending money? Yeah, I think I want to come here. Because they're going out eating steaks and they're drinking expensive wines and things like that. I mean, the conditions, we all know the conditions in the market. I mean, the housing market's nuts. I mean, expensive, there's no product out there. If there is a house for sale, you got 20 offers on them. So what do they do? What do these young professionals do? Well, they go to apartments. That's why you see all the apartments being built, and they're all filled, and they're being absorbed at twice the expected velocity. So these young professionals need places to live. In addition, I mean, there will be some economic In addition, I mean, there will be some economic benefit for the city. I mean, with this additional revenue that they're spending at the centers, they're gonna have more sales tax. They're gonna pay more goods, which have sales tax. And its stabilization, we're gonna be somewhere around one-point-four million dollars annually in ad valum taxes. And then we get to the stereotypes. You know, we hear it constantly. These are my kids that are living here. These are kids, young professionals, making six figures. I mean, that's who's living here. I mean, this isn't, we heard this is affordable housing, HUD housing. This is anything but that. I mean, this housing, members in the audience would live here. The dais would live here. I live in one down in Austin. So I, I think that, that stereotype, I mean, we're getting people that can't afford a house, they're living here, and it might be a time. It's a lifestyle choice. I mean, the amenities that we have, the clubhouses that we're building, I mean, this will have a minimum ten thousand square feet. It'll have a clubroom, leasing room. Clubroom will have the pool tables and the shuffleboards and the arcade games and the Pac-Man. We'll have co-work space, probably around fifteen hundred square feet. We'll have conference rooms. Large ones, small ones. We'll have podcast rooms with a soundproofing if people wanna do a podcast. We'll have the exercise room. I mean, this is what we're, you know, what we're providing. So people like that lifestyle. And there are people that are downsizing. I'm sixty-three, soon to be sixty-four. I have friends that are downsizing. They're looking to travel. And they're renting apartments in different cities so they can visit grandkids. And that's happening. People here, and the community here, may wanna downsize, get the equity out of their house. Have a nice place to live, shut the doors, they go. Still live in Highland Village. And then they can travel. Crimes. Again, what we require, background checks on everyone. We're gonna have a courtesy officer, one of the Highland Village police officers. We will ask, give them an apartment. And then we just don't tolerate, just like anything. You know, people respect what you inspect. We're not gonna put up with any nonsense. I don't want it. Y'all don't want it. It just makes it for, it's just harder to manage when you have problem people. But these are young professionals. These are all employed. Security, we'll have state-of-the-art. I mean, the garages will be, they'll be gated, certainly well-lit. We'll have cameras in all our entrances. And we asked the Highland Village Police Department to give us the nine-one-one calls generated from Montana Bowery Park, the apartments here. And what I did is, or we did, we extrapolated the number of bedrooms there. And we, they, we represented one person per bedroom. So we probably were conservative, probably understated that. And then we use that number based on seventeen thousand people. And they represent less than one percent of the calls. So in regards to nine-one-one calls, I mean, departments aren't generating any more than the general public. But again, it's the quality of the people that we're looking to live here. Getting into the, the design up on the screen, in the center of the screen, you can see the AMC Theater. And the first time we presented this, it was a two-phase, thinking that the AMC was not, not gonna be here. So we've adjusted the plan and cut the density in half, because I know that was a concern. Where it's a single phase and two-hundred-eighty units. And to the right, in the, the dark black, that's the apartment on the right. And you can see in the middle of that area, kind of the hash lines there, that's the parking garage. And you can see the garage, we've wrapped the garage with units, so you're not gonna see the garage. Okay? And you can see there's two courtyards there, and they're good size. And right now, we have parking lots, and now we're gonna bring some green space into that area. And you can see there's an entrance, kind of north and south. And up above, you can see what the average size is, eight-hundred-forty-eight units, two-hundred-eighty units. It's gonna be four levels. And we, what we did on the left-hand side is kind of required parking. And the retail there, it's a hundred-ten spaces, a theater, four-fifty. The residential's four, so nine-eighty-one. And what we're providing is nine-fifty-six, but this plan does not include snuffers. So it would be in kind of compliance in that regard. Here's a visual, and this is looking south. And you can see the building, the one, what I would call the passive courtyard. And you can see the neighbor is to the right. You can see the garage in the middle. It's enclosed, so you're not gonna see into the garage. This is looking further west. On the backside, you can see in the white box, that's the AMC. And we're doing this for scale. I mean, just to kind of give you some, sometimes it's, it's hard to visualize how big these are, but just to kind of give it some scale. What we did here is we actually dropped our renderings into, say, Google Earth. So these are the actual, excuse me, these are the actual trees. And the view with the trees. And I know there's a big concern, and I understand the concern, to the north, the residents to the north. But you can see the oak trees, I mean, it's pretty full. And the beauty about oak trees, they don't lose their leaves. They're, they're quite dirty, but they don't lose their leaves. And that's just kind of a further shot. And this, this kind of helps you too, you know, just the height of the building, you're pretty much the same height as the AMC. And one thing we wanted to present here, again, there's questions about the concern of the view from the back of the houses and vice versa. So what we did is we got a drone, and at those three points, A, B, and C, and starting from A, we said, okay, what is that view at the second floor, third floor, and fourth floor? So that's a second floor at A. That's the tree coverage. That's third floor. That's the fourth floor. Here's B, second, third, fourth. And C, second, third, and fourth. So with that, I just wanna say, I know there's concerns about apartments. I get it. I've heard it, understand it. But I think this is, I think this is something we'll be proud of. I mean, like I said, my name's not gonna be on this unless this is quality. And in light of the discussions that are had, I'm gonna make sure it's pretty damn good. Because I'm not gonna go in front of y'all and say, it's not that good. Let me turn it over. We wanted to have a traffic study that Kim Lee Horn did. I wanna introduce Jonathan Kirby. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Kirby with Kim Lee Horn, civil engineer. So just wanted to briefly go over the traffic study that was performed for this. As you can see here, the traffic counts were collected in November of 2021. Important to note, it was while schools were in session. And you have the study area for the intersections, the intersections along Village Parkway, Justin Road, Chin Chapel, and obviously the intersection of Village Parkway and Justin Road. Mary, you kind of stole my thunder with this one at the start, talking about the proposed improvements for Village Parkway and Justin Road. So I'll be brief on this, but yes, dual-left turn lanes, at all intersections. They will also have to re-time the signal with all of that. So the signal timing, meaning the time the light is green, yellow, and red for all phases, will also be looked at and changed with these. Again, you went into this, the thirty percent plans are set to be finalized, I think, in July, with construction anticipated to start in 2024. So if we hit the ground running, go full steam ahead, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we're delivering units before 2024. So we are very confident to say that, based on the schedule, that we've been provided by Tech dot and by Flower Mound, that the improvements would be constructed before we delivered units. So I wanted to just put this graph up there that shows the, the existing traffic volumes that we had at the, the studied intersections. And we have an AM peak hour, the morning, and a PM peak hour. And what we do is we, we sit out there for this project, we actually sat out there all day. Normally, we just do a three-hour window in the morning and a three-hour window in the evening. But we were there all day. And the, the AM peak hour was between eight and nine AM. That was the highest volume of traffic that we saw. The PM peak hour was between five and six PM. The PM peak hour, as you can see here, it's the gray. The AM is the orange, I guess. The, the PM peak hour was, was the highest volume. So that's what we're focusing on with this graph. That's, that's by far the, the most volume for these studied intersections. So this is our trip generation. So what we do in our traffic study, we get the existing counts that we got in November. I went through that. Then the industry standard is to go to the ITE manual, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And we calculate our proposed trips, what our proposed project trip generation would be, based on the industry standard for whatever that land use is in that project. So what you see here on the left-hand side is the existing condition, AM in orange and PM in gray, peak hour trips generated. So that's what's being generated by the site today. And then on the right side, that is the proposed trip generation. So you'll see that in the PM peak hour, we have an increase in trips over that hour of six trips per day. And in the AM peak hour, it's ninety-six trips additional per day. This is a graphic that shows the trip distribution. So this is based on the counts that we have and based on our industry experience and industry standards of where these trips are coming from. I'll briefly go through this, but it's really just more of a, a point for everyone to see. You know, we kind of have it, green, yellow, red, of where the most trips are coming from. So you'll see, as expected, westbound down Justin Road, the most trips from the site. Chin Chapel generates the least trips to the site. This slide represents the peak hour volume increase at the study intersections based on the proposed development. So what that means is the total number of trips that are there today in existing conditions, what is the percent increase at those studied intersections based on the chip generations that I went over a minute ago? So as you'll see, it is less than one percent at most intersections. It is one percent at the most of the studied areas. Then we have level of service. Level of service is an industry standard term used to decide if a intersection or if a roadway is operating at acceptable delay times. It's the definition. Kind of like in school, right? D equals degree. I think we've all heard that before. D is the acceptable level of service. So if you're at A, B, C, or D, you are considered acceptable. If you are at E or F, F is the lowest, then you are considered not acceptable level of service. This chart shows existing conditions. So you'll see that the Village Parkway and Justin Road intersection is currently operating at a level of service of E in the AM. That's why there's two letters there. So left side's AM, right side's PM. So it's a level of service E in the AM and F in the PM. Which is why the project is going on, or the intersection improvements are happening. This graph shows what the level of service will be at those intersections with the build-out of our project in addition to the project that is being done at the intersection of Justin Road and Village Parkway. So you'll see that what was a level of service of E in the AM and F in the PM at Justin Road and Village Parkway is now a level of service of D in the AM and D in the PM, which is considered an acceptable level of service. And that is the end of the presentation. Thank you.
All right. So I appreciate your patience. And so now we open the floor to any questions you have. I mean, I'm here to answer the retail questions, and obviously, my compatriots are able to answer the residential and traffic or anything else y'all have. So do we wanna start with P and Z questions first? Who with you?
I do. And it actually was about the traffic. And you might wanna pull, yeah, if you don't mind, can you pull the slide up that showed the one percent? Because I may have misunderstood what that, what that, yeah, that right there. So that's the peak hour volume increase due proposed, the proposed development. But in an earlier slide for the AM, I thought you said there were, it would be a hundred additional trips. So it went from two-ninety-six to threesome, which is more like thirty or forty percent.
If I didn't mention this, my apologies. I, I meant to. This is based on the peak hour, which was the PM, that five-to-six window.
Oh, oh, just the PM one.
So, yeah, so if you go.
So it, it was the six, the, then increased by six. Yeah, that one right there.
Right, right, yes. I don't, I don't have the numbers memorized, so I don't wanna over-commit here. But as I recall, the AM max increase was a five percent increase.
Five percent based on that slide you just showed? Because that, again.
Now, that's based on the existing traffic volumes. That's not an increase from, off, out of our site. That is, all the cars that are driving through these studied intersections, what's the percentage increase that we're adding to those intersections? Not percentage increase coming in and out of the site.
If, if the development went forward, five percent in the AM is what you're saying?
Yeah, that, that will be in our traffic study that we will submit if we make an application and move forward. So that, that number will be out in the open. That's what I recall it being.
Okay, that answers that question. And I had an additional question based on the apartments. If the average is eight-hundred-forty-eight, eight-hundred-forty-eight square feet, what would, and this probably is more for Mr. Boat, but what would be the, what is the expected rent structure of that?
The question was, what is the rents gonna be? What we anticipate, we haven't finalized a unit mix on this, but I would say we're probably gonna have seventy percent one-bedrooms and thirty percent two-bedrooms. The blended rent, and we'll have various sizes, especially with a, you start having angles around the parking garages, you have some unique, so we'll have probably twelve different floor plans. But the average will be, the rents will be at least two thousand dollars. We'll have one-bedrooms up to two thousand, and the two-bedrooms probably close to three thousand. So we'll have various sizes. But I would say the average rent is gonna be two thousand dollars.
And so I'm assuming when you say this is more for young professionals, retirees, those, that's kind of where you're getting the information, your, that price point is more suited for that.
Well, it's a combination, I mean, we have, I think we have ten under construction right now. That helps us, and then looking at the market, I mean, really, when we, there's a whole process when we design the development. Not only do we look at the competitive set, we look at the rents. And then we, we wanna certainly be in tune with the rents that are being charged. And then we look at the product that we're gonna build. So it's a combination of all those. So I think we feel very comfortable with the rents. And people making. And people making that income can certainly pay that. So we feel good about the rent structure.
Do you mind me asking, is that kind of where you're at in the Frisco development? That price point?
We're going to probably be, we're going to be higher in Frisco than here.
You are?
Yeah. Just because the market's higher. I mean, what will happen is, and it typically happens, you start at a point, and then if activity is very good, you raise it up. So the starting point for Frisco would be higher than here because the market out there is higher.
Sure, okay.
And maybe this will be helpful, too. I didn't mention this, just kind of the level of finish of the apartments. They're going to have quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, islands, kitchen islands, pendant lights, LVT wood flooring. We'll have tile surrounds to the ceiling up in the showers, tile baths. These will be full-size washer and dryer in each unit. These will be nice units. We'll have smart apartments where you can, we'll have an application where you can get into the garage, you can get into the buildings, you can get into the amenity space, you can open up your door, you can turn on your lights, you can turn on your thermostats, you can do your, you can pay your rent, you can put in a work order. So it'll be real high technology on this.
One other question.
Yeah.
You showed us kind of what that view was from the north side of the apartments. What's, what's your lighting like back there? What do you propose for lighting?
What are we proposing? Well, we're going to have to, we'll certainly light it up quite a bit, but we'll be mindful of the neighbors and we'll.
But I'm asking.
Yes.
What will the neighbors be looking at?
They're not going to be looking at lights. We're going to, if anything, we'll have the lights on the neighbor's side pointing towards our buildings. Yeah. I mean, certainly there's porch lights and things like that, that, you know, people will probably be utilizing, but as relates to streetlights or anything like that, there won't be anything. We'll be very mindful of that.
There's the existing lighting there now?
Yeah, I mean, there's existing poles there now. So if we have to complement it to get the light, because we want it safe. I mean, we want, you know, I always say, light it up, you know? So that's a preference. It's just good. And people feel secure when it's lit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any more questions?
Yeah, question on this side. Is that okay? Is that better?
Not much.
Can you hear me? Something wrong? Okay. So my question is, do you guys have a summary of a list of the zoning changes or SPUs or whatever that are going to be needed to complete this development?
We don't have.
No, we do not have a list, but we certainly, we know we're going to have to have a list before we talk to them. Do we have a list to present to you now? We know height, you know, parking and, you know, the landscaping setbacks and all that. Yes. But we're kind of at a conceptual right now, and we're just trying to be mindful of the process. And, you know, if we get to a point that we are going to, then our engineers, Kimberly, who we work with, will get, put some fine lines onto the drawings and get more exact in an actual request.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. Is the parking garage going to be open to the public or is it gated? I didn't get to look.
No, there will be some retail parking on the first floor.
Okay.
Since we're taking some spaces, yeah. Where that demarcation is, we haven't determined that yet because we haven't designed it. But there's probably, I think, somewhere around 180 spaces, I think, within the garage. Don't hold me to that. But something like that that we'll have for retail, since we're taking some space.
Thank you.
Question that I did have relates more to the current occupancy, where your rates are and the expectation. And again, I want to clarify for myself. My understanding, and I'm excited about this, if I'm understanding correctly, AMC stays? Is that the current plan? I know there's no guarantee on that, but.
Right, that's exactly what I was going to say. We have a handshake on it, and so yes, we anticipate that a movie theater will be there and staying. But I can't control the industry or AMC.
I spend a lot of money on movies over there, so.
That's good.
Are you shrinking it or is it going to stay the same?
No, it's going to stay the same. I mean, we have talked to them about redeveloping it, which is putting in more luxury seating, but they just don't have the capital right now. So that's, if that happens, that'll be three to five years down the road. That would reduce the number of seats, but footprint would stay the same even then.
And on that note, the slide that I saw does look like Snuffers would be gone?
Yeah, yeah. And so that's where, I don't know where those discussions are, because if Snuffers would like to stay in the project, and we would like them to stay in the project, we'll find a new forum. Because we are well leased on a percentage basis, we have quite a few deals that are on shorter terms that we could find the space for them.
And then the anticipation, if the units do go in, is there a short list of potential new tenants?
I mean, we, I have my list that I want very badly, and I tell my leasing team that all the time. Sometimes they tell me I'm completely unrealistic, so there's a balance there. But like, the sip and savor was high on our list. That restaurateur was one that worked for the group that's done some phenomenal concepts around the Dallas area. And so what he's designing, what he's building is really going to be added to the restaurants there and really just bring the competitive level within the restaurants to a higher level. And I should say this, at lunch today, we went to Shoals, and so we met Jim, the owner of Shoals and Lambos, here, there he is. And so we were asking for his feedback about what he thought about this, and it was just like, oh, they bring more customers. We need the people to come buy the expensive drinks. So, sorry, Jim, we're also bringing the competition in, but hopefully it'll help.
Okay, the only other question that I had was about the traffic. One of the things that we know is happening west of this intersection, there's a lot of growth and there are a lot of new subdivisions and new homes being built in those areas. Was that taken into consideration as part of the growth coming from that western direction?
Yeah, sure. So when we do, when we do the study, we do, there's a horizon year, is what we call it. So for this, the horizon year was 2028. So we project growth volumes based on historic data and based on industry standards. And these aren't growth volumes of population growth necessarily, it's traffic growth. So based on historic data and based on what we have done on other studies around here working with other cities, we assume a 2% traffic growth year over year. That to say, this, the only person that this has been submitted to is the public. So if the city wanted us to take a look at different growth rates and had data to support different growth rates, we certainly would do that.
And there's just one phase, right? There was just.
Yeah, we heard that one loud and clear at the meeting last fall. So, yeah, that was one thing we really studied from an economic standpoint, just to see whether we could justify the one phase and, because we heard loud and clear that the larger 580 apartments, I think, was just not tenable. And so we, that's where we made that decision to shrink it.
And I know it's still in conceptual phase, but do you guys feel comfortable with an estimate on the total capital to complete this project? The time that it would take to do that, and then when it would be completed?
Yes, we're anticipating about 75 million and 25 million of equity. If we were once given the green light, I would say a year for us to start, probably deliver the first, first units, 18 months out, complete in 26 months. So right now, we haven't started full design, really kind of conceptual. We haven't got into our schematic design yet.
Anybody else?
I got one. How long do you all, I mean, do you build these and hold them or you build them, sell them, move on down the road?
Well, we typically hold them. I mean, we haven't, we only sold one of our new projects so far. And to be honest, it was because we never had a history of selling. And it was funny with the investors that we were talking to, they go, well, what's your success been on your new project? We said, we haven't sold any. And so it's almost like we had to do a round trip in a sense to show that what the yields were, so we did that. I think with a partner, with AEW, I think Sean was pretty clear that this is a long-term hold asset for them, and they would be partners in this. So this, so this would be a long-term hold. So with that, long-term hold, you make better decisions long-term. You know, you might spend more money on finishes and development if you know you're going to hold it versus flipping it. You just do it a little smarter. So this would be considered a hold property.
And what's the longest property you've got that you're all holding? How?
Well, we just started developing, you know, five years ago, so I'd say five years on the new stuff. We've owned stuff probably 15 years, I think. Company's about 18 years old. Started off buying duplexes and stuff, but getting into the bigger 200-plus units probably after three years, so probably 15 years or so. Yeah.
Yeah, just on, just on the question for, you know, do we plan to flip? This absolutely would be a build decor, you know, for us, long-term hold, essentially doubling down on the center, honestly. But we have that much conviction on the asset and all the growth that's happening here to make that call. Build decor is a concept we do see nationally, taking vacant land parcels and activating them. It's very competitive. You know, if you think it's really competitive to buy a single-family home today, it's just as competitive in the commercial side. So big institutions like myself, we find, you know, land developers, partner with groups such as Mark and Presidium, build the product and hold it. So it absolutely would be a long-term hold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have all the questions from.
Yeah, question for the pension fund, your funding. What pension do you represent?
Yeah, I'll try to dive into as much detail as I can.
You don't have to get in wage, just.
Yeah, exactly. So this is a state pension fund. They represent state employees and teachers for the state of Massachusetts. They're one of the largest pension funds and have been, you know, a very active investor and certainly, you know, for this site, you know, I think, you know, I've been pleasantly pleased with the results here, but they definitely see the potential to add value and, you know, make the center better. And, you know, I think we're really focused on that. I think back to the question about occupancy, you know, we are trying to do everything we can to bring fresh tenants and attract tenants. That does require capital. We've been very willing to do that, you know? And I think in a long-term strategy like that, a long-term hold, when you're given new information, new data, you know, the pandemic was one of those for us. It requires us to think about the next 10 years, right? So the pension funds can do that, you know, not every investor can. So you guys really have a good partner here, you know, to be looking at these things proactively in terms of your strategy, so.
You guys are, who's funding the apartment, the multifamily? You guys are?
The pension fund would be funding it.
Denver, that's, that's the reason I asked that question, because typically pension funds, they hold assets for long-term, so it's like clipping coupons for their members? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you got it.
All right. So 75 million to build, and then your average unit size is 848 square feet? What's the largest unit size?
Well, probably our two bedrooms will be 1450.
Okay, so your, so your rents are anywhere from 2 to 2,500?
Yes, the average, yeah, we'll have, the average will be a little over 2,000. And we will have one bedrooms that may be smaller based on where they line up. So they may be below 2,000. I mean, we may have 600, 700 square foot. But we'll get close to 2,000 on the one bedrooms, and the two bedrooms could go up close to 3,000.
I ask this, repeat that in the mic, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Our viewers.
No, I, I apologize. Okay, let me see if I can try and repeat the question. The question was, the average size being 848 units or square feet? And I said that there was going to be, we're probably going to have probably 12 different unit sizes.
Got you.
And the two bedrooms are probably going to go up to 1450. Again, it depends, could go up to 1,500.
So this could be 3,000?
It could be close to that.
Okay. What I'm trying to gauge is, I follow you, but I'm trying to gauge for our listeners, you're not going to have units in this complex that are going to be renting for 12 to 1,500. You're talking high-end Class A.
Well, yes. I would say, and without having to, we're going to be probably close to 250 a square foot on those small one bedrooms.
Calculated.
And so that's probably, and then if you put a 10%, you know, the fees and things like that, they're probably minimum be 1,700, even the smallest ones. And then the bigger ones are going to go up to probably close to 2,800 and then some.
How many elevators in the project?
We typically like to do, I don't know what we have planned here, but I would say we probably have four. We usually like to do 70 to 80, an elevator per 75 to 80 people.
Right. And then all units are sprinkled fire?
Yes, yes.
And then going to the comment about the police officer apartment?
I'm sorry, say it again.
The police officer that's going to have an apartment? Is that what you said?
We would offer, if, if, if the police officer or the police department would allow it.
Okay.
We do that, we call them courtesy officers.
Okay.
And we would offer a unit.
Right.
As compensation for doing minor patrol, having a car present and things like that.
All right, would you please tell the chief that I accept that position? Okay.
We would have to, I don't want to be presumptuous.
Right, I understand.
But we'd have to make sure that it's, that is acceptable. We do this in other communities, but we just think it's a wonderful asset to have an officer.
And then when does the, to you, the shop owner, when does the Snuffers lease expire?
I believe it's 2023.
Okay, because you can probably.
2023.
Unless you guys do something really sweet, you can probably count on Snuffers to exit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's where it always comes down to, is negotiation.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I think we would like it. We've heard they like it, but it's, we've already taken a huge hit on the AMC, so I'm not sure how much more of a hit we can take.
Yeah. And then for those who are listening, 75 million to build this, that is, just so you know, that is A+. We've been involved, I'm in the banking industry, and I've been involved in several multifamily projects, and you guys are making a true commitment here whether or not it goes through and passes. I just commend you on your work and true commitment of 75 million. And if you're getting close to $3 a foot, which I'm calculating on the larger, larger units, that's pretty stout, the interior parking. You're not going to allow anybody to park on the street or outside of the units, correct?
Let me, let me correct something here. You mentioned $3 a foot. No, we're not going to get to $3 a foot.
I know, but you're getting close.
Yeah.
You can kind of play with the numbers.
I would say with the one bedrooms, maybe we get to 250 or so. I think overall might be 215, yeah. In regards to the parking, we plan to have enough parking, 1.5 spaces per unit within the garage. Now, and hopefully their guests can park there, too. But certainly there's, there's parking available. We can't control people, but we should, the parking for the apartment should be self-contained.
Got you. Last question. What is your walking traffic goal? Talked about it 2019, 20, 21. How many people you want to see, you guys want to see going through the, through the shops? What's your goal?
For the shops' traffic?
Talked about your walking traffic. So what's your goal?
You mean like on the, the four and a half million side?
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, we'd be north of 5 million. I mean, what we really try to do is grow that traffic, and that's our marketing program and the tenant leases. And so, you know, we would like to be over 5 million.
Okay. I think that's it.
Anybody else? And let me actually add one thing on the parking question is that I was just thinking of it from the retail perspective, is that yes, we're going to be very tight from the retail perspective to make sure that renters aren't parking in front of all the stores. Because that's the most valuable space for the stores, too.
What are you getting in current rents right now?
Current rents on the property?
Uh huh. Average?
Average is probably mid-20s plus taxes. Yeah, triple net.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody down here?
Yes. Let's see. Have you had any conversations with DCTA since it appears that a majority of these residents will not be driving in or out?
DCTA?
Denton County Transit Authority.
I have not.
Mass Transit?
I don't know. Jonathan would be asking me. No.
Okay. Let's see. We are in the process of updating our comprehensive plan. Have you had any conversations with McAdams or any involvement in our comprehensive plan?
I have not, no. We have not been approached yet. Sounds like that's coming soon.
Okay. You were once quoted, "Our mantra has always been, get on the ground and let neighborhoods come up with the plan. We're not marching into a community and telling residents what should go on each corner. We're working with them on a daily basis to earn their trust." Are you currently doing that with Highland Village residents and how?
Well, we had a HOA meeting that I know you're aware of in October, and that was to present it to the HOA. It turned out that a lot more people than the HOA came out. And so then we've met with the HOA board, and then this is another attempt to disclose what we're doing in public and to open that dialogue.
So back in October, Mark had indicated that the demographics did not include children, maybe newborns, but no children. Are you still anticipating no school-aged children to be residents here?
I can't tell you what residents are going to come, and we can't discriminate on that.
Right.
We just anticipate that the profile that we're seeing across our properties typically do not have children.
Okay.
But I can't say that a couple doesn't show up with a child.
Right.
We can't say no, so.
No, I understand.
But that's our anticipation because we're not building three bedrooms. If we thought that was the market, we would build three bedrooms.
Right. Understood. Just seeing if anything changed since last October. You also mentioned last October that you guys were tearing down theaters all over the nation to put up apartments. Do you have examples of communities where you have torn down apartments or torn down the movie theaters and replaced with apartments?
Yes. Jacksonville, Florida, Regal Theater.
Can you give me the name of the property?
It's on Beach Boulevard.
Okay.
Regal Theater. It's torn down right now, and we're building 340 apartments.
Is that inside a retail area like the shops at Highland Village?
No, there's some out parcels with residential behind.
Okay. Do you have a property?
And then we have another.
Hang on. Do you have a property that was currently developed that you redeveloped with apartments that is similar to the shops at Highland Village that we could baseline against or reference to?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Basically, what I'm looking for is everything that we've seen here is new builds. What I haven't seen is a redevelopment of a property within close proximity to existing housing.
This isn't going to be a redevelopment?
They're redeveloping a portion of it.
Technically, they are.
No. Snuffers is going away.
Okay. Do you have?
Yeah, but to answer your question.
Do you have an example of an existing shopping center where you removed a portion of it to build up apartments?
No.
Okay.
No, but what we are doing, I think I mentioned earlier, we are working with a national developer right now that we're submitting an LOI to take down either a JCPenney or Sears that we're doing, which is in a neighborhood. In addition, we are, we knocked down, or we're going to knock down, I apologize, we purchased a property up in Kennesaw, Georgia, just north of Atlanta, another Regal Theater, because they are all going out of business. And we are going to knock that down and build 350 units, and we already bought the property. And we're anticipating breaking ground probably in September, October.
And where's that property?
Kennesaw, Georgia. It's the Kennesaw Mall.
Mm-hmm.
It's on Town Center Parkway.
Okay. Is that it? Mr. Feaster?
This may be for the city, it may be for the developers, but the current infrastructure in that area, in that corner, water, sewer, has it, is it available to service this property as you intend it to be developed with the current infrastructure that's there in the ground? Or would you be anticipating adding an upsized water or sewer to this property?
We haven't done that analysis as far as I know. I mean, I think that's more of a city question. We've never run into any issues on the existing property, but I haven't asked that question of the city before.
Okay. I didn't do the math, I apologize. But what is the density that you would be looking for just for the apartments? How many people per acre, basically?
Well, it's two. I apologize. It's 280 units and approximately four and a half acres.
50-something units per acre.
Thank you. That's it for now. You probably have something else.
I do have a question for you. When you started looking at reconstruction or doing something with a center to enhance its viability, what alternatives did you look at beyond the apartments?
I mean, we looked at quite a bit. So I mean, I'll tell you, like, from hotel perspective, we looked at hotels, and hotels were an opportunity, but I mean, a hotel is not going to make or break anything. We've looked at office, but offices, and one was suffering prior to COVID, now, I mean, nobody's going to touch office with a 10-foot pole. And so really, the two hottest concepts are residential and industrial. And I was making a leap of faith here, but I guess that y'all would not approve us putting up an industrial building here and doing warehousing. So that left residential as the alternative. So we did talk about different alternatives to residential, and that was brought up at the October meeting. And so, I mean, I really need to defer to Mark on that because I was, part of the conversation was about the viability from, like, a townhome concept would potentially work in underwrite, but it doesn't really move the needle because there aren't that many townhomes that can fit in there because it gets to lower density. And then when you start looking at senior housing and stuff like that, then that's just not what Mark historically has done. And we wanted something of higher quality that really brought a consumer that was going to shop because typically the best consumers are those that are really from, say, 15 to 40, and they're the ones that spend the most money. And so that's where the multifamily really aligns with that vision and creates more viability for the shops. And so from a shops perspective, the multifamily is the most ideal to bring that traffic to the shops and to the retailers and to drive our sales.
You said that the townhome aspect doesn't really move the needle. When you say doesn't move the needle, in terms of profit for the organization or is it in terms of additional sales tax revenues and foot traffic to the businesses?
Really, I'm talking about the foot traffic because when you have 280 apartments and one and a half people per apartment.
So you have, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you're talking, hey, what is that, 420 people versus townhomes? And I don't know if we even laid anything out, but you're talking 30 to 40, and that's more family-oriented, and so it's, I mean, a consumer that's a little older may not spend as much, and so you're talking maybe 100 people total. So I mean, that's where the multifamily brings probably four times as many people, but a lot more spending power, too.
Okay. And this may be for you, sir. The complex, the multiple complexes you have on the ground at this stage, relatively new, I believe, is what you said before. How often and what percentage of input do you give, what timeframe do you give for reinvestment into the buildings to keep them up to standard for the community, keep them viable, keep them attractive? How often are you going to reinvest in this complex to keep it attractive for people?
Yeah, I mean, it's absolutely an evolution. I mean, we work the sites. I work on a handful of assets across the country at the same time, but this is probably my biggest commitment. So this is essentially a full-time job for me to not just make sure we are attracting tenants, but maintaining the property. You know, I'm very happy and proud of the shopping center we have today, you know, of the four corners. You know, we're the one with the brightest landscape, you know, the freshest, you know, feel and best, I mean, customer shopping experience. That takes money, and we are very proud to spend that because we think that's the best shopping experience, attracts the best customers, attracts the best tenants, you know, attracts the most sales. So it's something we are constantly looking at. We go through a pretty rigorous, you know, business plan process. We identify, you know, where we need to be spending capital for maintenance issues. You know, it's, besides me, it's a huge team for Pogue and Robbie here to identify that. And over the course of less than a decade, it's been tens of millions of dollars. So that's an ongoing commitment, you know, for us. And again, we operate quality shopping centers. We operate quality real estate, you know, that's what our clients expect us to do, and that's what they want to own.
Thank you.
Mr. Heslop?
Yeah, I have one other comment, and I'm sure Dan, representing our city's mayor, will say this, but all of you that are out here, thank you for coming tonight. I mean, your concern, your care, your belief in Highland Village is very big. And I would say this to you, sir. I think we're all going to want to, and we all have a lot of vested interest here in Highland Village, but what are you going to do to win these people over? Because we are their voice, they support us, we support the city and the city we love and we live in. So really, these people out here are the ones that count. These people are the ones that are here that have the concern. So what are you guys going to do to make them feel comfortable with what you're going to propose in this change to this city?
Yeah, I definitely appreciate everyone being here. I'm sure everyone else on the lines and on the recording, you know, YouTube. So thank you guys for making the time. The key message here is you guys are in good hands. You know, we have a very conservative, long-time horizon owner that wants to make the right calls, you know, and is willing to put in the work and dollars to make it happen. You know, I think the key here is we're looking at a long time horizon. You know, we're talking about AMC, you know, if everyone just flashes back 24 months ago, what we're all focused on, completely different landscape, you know? Looking at Josh's slides about where we were, you know, 2007 to 2017, you know? There's a lot of progress that's happening. These plans take a long time to develop, a lot of work for everyone here to make it happen. So you guys are in good hands. We need time to go through this process. We're focused on delivering the best results, and we have the capital and the partners and the owners, investors, to do that. So you guys absolutely should trust us to get this done. But first and foremost, this is a retail shopping center, and we are looking at this opportunity to help complement that, future-proof that, and make us competitive versus where we see the rest of the market and national trends are happening that are going to make us be able to retain tenants, attract new tenants. And I will say, you know, we are having success, but, you know, today's success might not be tomorrow's success, so we need to be thinking more holistic about where this could go. And, you know, I think this is really what we're trying to accomplish today. So that's my message.
Well, I've got an additional question for you. You, in the presentation, the, leaving the AMC, you built, you showed a drawing with the apartments on the east side of AMC. Given the concerns of the citizens that they've already in October given, and many of us have heard, beyond the traffic, whereas the height of the building as well as the view to the residents behind it, and you showed a video of the drone, which appears to show no impact visually, right? When you looked at the plan and you had the building on the east side of the AMC, there, that one. And I'm assuming just by looking at it, it's a space configuration more than anything else. There's a pond on the west side behind the AMC and parking lot. Why would you not try to configure it on that side to minimize the impact to your residents?
Yeah, I mean, we've explored a lot of options here. Again, this is not something we pulled together in a couple of weeks. We've been studying this even before Josh and the team have on-boarded it since our ownership. We've looked at this and tried to pencil and think about what we could be doing with the pad sites or other areas of the shopping center. I think we have to look fundamentally at the economics, and, you know, you have a very large open parcel for parking, you know, from a logistics total cost, and to be able to actually deliver what we intend to do with minimal impact and complements, these are very complex moving pieces of what we're trying to accomplish. We think steering a single phase on the east side was the easiest path forward that accomplished, I think, what we intended and satisfied, you know, some of the questions and concerns from the community, so.
And a lot of the concerns from the community, obviously, were the traffic, the, just the lack of desire for apartments, and I know you've heard that before, given the amount of land that's available. And I know that the AMC staying creates a different challenge for you. The initial plan is different. You've cut the apartments back roughly in half, but an alternative to configuration, putting apartments on the west side and adding additional retail, shopping, restaurants on the east side, which gives the residents what they're looking for, more shopping opportunities. It minimizes the apartments on the west side if you put it on that, obviously. So there's, you're minimizing the impact overall. You're also minimizing the visual view from the residents if you're able to put it on the west side with the pond. You've got a road on the west side, Chin Chapel, so you don't have an effect to your residents. And those are the alternatives I was asking about before, not simply types of buildings, types of structures, but there's so many ways you can configure this, and I know it's a dollar issue more than anything else. But we built this corner. When we put that in, our primary focus was for sales tax revenue. We needed to increase the sales tax revenue in this city, and the only place we had that was along 407. You're asking us to reduce that possibility and add ad ver lorum tax. Well, the arguments before were we were heavily dependent upon property tax, and we need an alternative, and that is our sales tax revenue. When I look at this, I think it's a beautiful development, and I trust that you're going to build it in a very high-level standard, but you're still minimizing the sales tax revenue to this community, which is asking our community to pay a little bit more in property tax to maintain the services that we have. So when you, when this is configured, if there's any alternatives that can be looked at to maximize sales tax revenue, I think it's more receptive overall in the community.
Yeah, and absolutely, I echo that. But, you know, we're fundamentally landlords, right? We don't operate these businesses. So when Josh and his teams are in the market trying to find tenants and replacements, we're kind of at the beck and call for who's there. We certainly will do what we can to be attractive and, you know, bring capital for them to make the investments and take the space. But we have to consider as long-term holders, what happens to AMC if they decide to leave? And in that case, they aren't producing any sales tax, right? So there are definitely risks, there's deals, there's risk to do in development, and we're very focused on trying to get the site plan right. I think fundamentally, again, this is a shopping center, and we are very focused on first serving our current tenants and attracting new tenants and increasing the sales tax. That, this has not changed, you know, our mission. This is complementary, and we do think because it is a vacant land right now, activating it and bringing these units online in the future is the best path forward to collectively help everyone. We have looked on the west side, but because of the density and requiring a parking structure and essentially asking tenants to be, you would have to walk all the way across the shopping center to get a car if you're a resident. From a flow perspective, it would have been really challenging to build a structure, a parking structure in the units. It was a trade-off, and I think we struggled with that in our design, you know, process. We just could not make the numbers penciled out to build on the west side, and, you know, the amount that you could deliver on the east side ultimately proved the path of least resistance, so.
And the building that is on, that faces the southern piece of this land, first level, every level, the four levels is all apartments. The possibility of converting the first level along that entrance into the center. The possibility of converting the first level along that entrance into the center to retail, has that been explored?
Yeah, we have studied that. There's a possibility we could have first-floor retail. You know, I think we have retail today, and we probably have a little bit more than we want in terms of, you know, I think there's still some leasing we want to do. But absolutely, you know, I was driving down into Lakeside, and there's a lot of first-floor retail, and all that stuff is full. So, you know, I think absolutely bringing those type of units brings a different kind of tenant, and, you know, something we would explore.
Of the other complexes that you manage, what is your, I guess the best way to ask it, what is your average vacancy rate?
I think in our full retail portfolio, we're about 94% leased.
Leased. Where are you here?
We are around 86, 87. This shopping center is a little unique. We do have a second-floor office, which, you know, office is probably the biggest prototype we're struggling with. But this is still pretty well-performing. It's sort of two steps forward, one step back. You know, for a long time in 2016 to 2018, there were a lot of national bankruptcies that sort of rippled through, you know, everything. So, you know, the latest example, Joseph A. Bank, was a national closure. We didn't have any control. We tried to retain him. That's kind of the challenge that Josh was talking about, you know. So we definitely have some work to do on the leasing side. That includes the new concepts that are coming in later this year. But on top of that, you know, there's a lot of temp tenants that we're hoping to bring to permanent deals and sort of incubate them to take permanent locations and grow their relationship. So we're absolutely, you know, on top of trying to stabilize the asset and make it the best it can be. And honestly, it's short-term pain for us, you know, because it's less dollars in our pocket, but we're willing to make that commitment and try to shore it up, so.
Thank you.
What's the plan? Let's say, let's say things don't go out the way we want, you want. What is a backup plan or Plan B? Is there even one in place or anything you can share? You guys are, you guys know what you're doing, so I know there's a potential backup. Does that change your outlook on the long-term hold versus a short-term hold? Does it change? I mean, where would that go if things don't go out the way you want them to go?
Specifically for the development? You're just talking about retail?
No, no, no. Specifically for this development, what we're here for today. I mean, I know you can't predict everything, and gosh, we couldn't predict what's going on right now anyway. But if this doesn't go through to your liking, what's Plan B?
Yeah, no. Again, the key of this, right, is to focus on the future of what we think adds value and attracts the most tenants. We think those are key drivers to where we think competitive retail and really competitive real estate is going to be. If you're not addressing the demand drivers for the product, you're going to fall behind for obsolescence, and you're going to see that in the performance, right? So that said, we like the fundamentals a lot here. You know, our investor is really focused on a long-term commitment. They've proven that. They've been here for almost 10 years. We see a path forward without this development, just to be clear. And again, we have a great working relationship with the city to make that happen. You know, we have a number of city services we employ. We employ many people in the site, and, you know, I think we see really trying to unlock the potential of the project. I don't think this changes, you know, our decision to hold or sell. You know, that's, we can't take a day-to-day, you know, mindset based on this. We see this as a decision that needs to come ahead in the near term. But, you know, we can be patient and work through that, you know, process for sure. You know, we just, we're essentially, you know, are allowing or requesting for some ability to, you know, be flexible in how this planned development was approached, you know, 15, 20 years ago, so.
And then I just had one last thought, and that was, I understand the reason why moving it to the west is tough, just because of the footprint. You want to do a wraparound-type situation. Is there, and this is, I'm not here to redesign your project. I'm not an architect or an engineer. But is there, you know, a thought to putting the parking garage at the back of the property so you don't have your residents overlooking other residents? It's just a garage. And that might even be a garage without any openings on that end. You know, so that way, there's a curtain wall with the, you know, the foliage on it and whatever to help mask it. But that would remove some of the issues that obviously are a problem here, and that is four-story homes looking into people's backyards. And I know what the drone looks like and so forth. I get it. But just as a peace-of-mind-type thing, is there, is that even a way to shuffle that around or?
Did study that, and I think where we see the design trends is, you know, it's more effective. It's less obstructive, you know, in terms of people's opinions on the project if you're able to minimize the parking appearance. So if you're able to hide that and mask it, I think Mark put together a pretty thoughtful design package. Again, this is months of studying alternatives.
And I understand why you want to do it that way and how it looks for your property, but the residents that live behind there are looking at a concrete wall from the movie theater and have been forever, so it's not going to be that big of a deal to put a concrete wall right next to it the other way without people looking over into their yards.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah. We also studied, just point out, the setback from the tree line that Mark pointed out. You know, that was something we also studied to make sure that we felt like we're giving more than ample enough space as far as we could take it. And, you know, ultimately, we did, you know, have to make a tough decision about stuff first. You know, we talked about the sales tax issue. You know, we don't like to lose the retail, and, you know, I think we're trying to, again, deliver quality product, and sometimes that means, you know, taking some dollars out of our pocket to make it happen. But that's what quality takes sometimes, so.
Anybody else? Mr. Feaster, you had some questions, I think, for staff?
Couple of questions for staff and fire. So I'll start with Mr. Christian. Is there any reason to believe that the existing infrastructure at this corner would need to be upgraded to service this? Water and sewer specifically? Well, and I'll admit storm because it's impervious now. It'd be impervious when it gets redeveloped. And if it does need to be upgraded, can you clarify who would bear that cost to upgrade those utilities?
Sure. We would work with the developer upon application to review the existing infrastructure. Right now, it's built with additional capacity. 300 proposed units. You know, we'll look at it, see what the flows would be, and look for choke points in the existing system. If we do find some, we would work with the developer to develop a plan, to design, and pay for those upgrades.
By the developer?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And then for the fire department, Chief Collier?
Sorry. I'm just going to call everybody up just.
Please to be in queue.
Please get their apartment. They're fine. Thanks, Chief. So I know fire was, looking at this plan with a four-story building, I'm going to say it's maybe 55, 60 feet tall on average. With our current fire department, I don't mean to denigrate what anybody does, but with the equipment we have, is there any reason to believe that we couldn't service this facility with our current equipment?
Currently, this facility, being four-story, we will not be able to.
It would, what, sorry?
We will not be able to. We'll need additional, more likely an aerial truck, ladder truck.
Can I follow up real quick?
Yeah, that was it.
Chief, given recent conversations with respect to mutual aid on EMS calls.
Correct.
Do you have any experience or knowledge, like, for example, Louisville with similar projects? How frequent calls are for just an ambulance to multifamily versus just regular single-family? And where I'm going is, with this pressure that we're going to now experience because of the mutual aid situation, if you have an ambulance that's dispatched to the east side of the city, and then something happens in a place like this on the far west side, what are we looking at in terms of ability to respond, time to respond, risk to patient?
Looking, and I can only look at the district right now, the call load that the district provides as far as the residential isn't that large of impact. I mean, we made about 40 to 50 calls out there last year, so it's not that huge of impact. As far as response time, I mean, it's, is any other calls to that area, if we're on the other side of town or out, then you're going to have a delayed response because we only have one ambulance in town.
Right. And we're looking at, if we have to rely on Flower Mound, and in this case, it's going to be coming from where?
Currently, right now, if it's in-house, it's coming from basically the post office, where the post office is in Flower Mound off Morse.
And is that, I mean, what I'm hearing is that may not, that may change in the future, that they may want to come from further out. Is that true?
They will have, I mean, as far as, Flower Mound hasn't said to us that they're going to move the ambulants anywhere, but there could potentially be one added out of Flower Mound at Station 4, which is on Bridlewood.
Okay.
At the Country Club. I don't know the exact address of it, but obviously, Station 1 in Flower Mound, that's their busiest ambulance, so it's in utilization. So our next medic comes out of Louisville, which is their Station 1, which is by Louisville High School. So, and that's both their two busiest ambulances, so.
Potentially a significant impact on response time is where we're going.
Sure.
Yeah, the Bridlewood Station's halfway between 407 and 2499. I'm sorry, 1171.
Okay. That was all I had for the fire department. Any other questions from anybody else? Otherwise, I've got a handful.
Have at it, buddy.
Okay. So I want to talk about the city a little bit. Throw some facts out that I'm sure you guys are aware of. We're about five and a half square miles, about 16, almost 17,000 people. We're landlocked by the lake and our neighbors to the south. We don't have room to grow. We're not urban, and some would say we're barely suburban. So my question is, and it was kind of going to what Mr. Nelson was talking about, when you look, most of your properties that you've shown, that you've, in your presentation, appear to be more urban-based or urban-centered. So when you talk about the type of tenant that you're going to be trying to attract, how accurate do you think your estimates are when you take into consideration, we are literally not like anything else you've ever done? Our community is not, I don't think, I don't think there's a place where you've done something like this before.
To be honest, this is nicer. This is a wonderful development. There is such a demand. I think you could put an apartment on the airport runway, and it would fill up. There is such a demand. I mean, this is not, this is not someplace that's hard to get to. I mean, you can get to employment centers pretty easy from here. So this isn't a stretch. Have we done anything exactly? No, we haven't. Any property that we go to, there's, I mean, they're all different. But we are building retail. I mean, we're taking down theaters. We're talking, I'll repeat myself, but there is a movement of mall developers to redevelop existing malls with more multifamily. I mean, that's a trend. I mean, just Google it. I mean, it's a trend. It's what's going on.
I don't disagree with that.
You're bringing your shoppers. But we haven't, we haven't had anything. Have we done something similar to this? No. But have we developed in residential areas? Yes.
This far off the freeway? I mean, I know we're not talking miles and miles, but it's not right on the freeway like, say, Frisco is.
No, and I, no, it's not, but yes, we have. I mean, I live in an area called Ponte Vedra Beach in Florida. I have, I live in Dallas, too, and it's 28,000 people, and it's a very affluent beachside community. And no one drives there, and I built some apartments there, and they filled up. And it's very nice. So people will, I think what makes this site attractive for an apartment developer, okay, we were asked to participate in this. I mean, the owner thought this would be what would be needed to take it into the next generation wherever the retail goes. So being invited to this group, Sean, they interviewed 10 groups. I mean, nationally, you know, it's the who's who. And for whatever reason, we were fortunate. But I look at this, and why wouldn't you want to come home here and travel? But when you come home, you have a beautiful place to live. I mean, why wouldn't you do that? Why wouldn't you drive an extra 5, 10 miles? Because once you get there, example, I live at the beach, but I commuted 30 minutes because when I came home, I was at the beach. And I'll drive that extra, you've got the same thing here, same situation here. Why do I want to live on 35 with a highway there and the noise where I can drive five minutes west and be in this community? With a retail, and I can go right downstairs, and I can get a sandwich, I can get a drink, I can meet some friends? I mean, it's a no-brainer. Whole Foods right there, so it's not hard. I mean, we wouldn't be collectively betting 75 million that we hope they come.
Well, I guess where I was going was a different direction. Where my question is going is Highland Village has always been a lakeside community, single-family lakeside community. And whereas other places that you have developed, they've been communities that had room to grow, room to accommodate multifamily and keep, I guess, a firewall, if you will, between multifamily and single-family residential. And obviously, given the outspoken nature of our residents last October through the election season this spring, it's still a really, really tough rock to push up a really tall mountain, in my view.
No, I understand.
So I'm trying to, how do you integrate this project into what is an established culture in our city?
Yeah. Well, I think, it's a great question. I understand the issue. It's quite clear. But the four and a half million people that are coming here to the center, you have 17,000 people here. The majority of the people are coming from outside of Highland Village. And you know what? They live in apartments. So you have apartment people coming to Highland Village to shop. And I'm sure there's a great, because that's what they do. That's what apartment people do, is they go out to eat. So I bet you, you're getting everyone from the neighboring communities, all the apartments coming here to eat. So the concern about apartments and maybe the profile of the tenants, you have them here, and the city's not burning down. So I think, but what we are proposing is to build something better than what they have built. So I don't know, it still may not be receptive. I understand that. But again, we were asked to participate in this with the goal, okay, this is a beautiful neighborhood, so we have to build something nice. And with that, the profile of the people and the rents and the amenities, we will have people similar to the residents here or the audience here who live in the apartments, maybe not specifically them, but people like them that make the same amount of money or more that want a quality of life. I don't think we're going to overburden schools. I mean, we're not building three bedrooms, but we are building, I mean, we're building in opportunities, we're building something right now. We're in McKinney. We got 1,000 units proposed, and we have residential near us. So we're kind of getting ready to do that, too. So, but this is a special place. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't. And I understand the concerns, and it's up to the city to decide that fate. But I just want to say, as Sean did, I mean, Sean representing, being the owner, whether we do on another apartment here, that's, we're fine. But you have a wonderful partner here. I mean, AEW, they're world-renowned. I mean, they are world-renowned. And you have a tremendous partner here. Whether we do apartments here or not, I think the city's fortunate because they do do a wonderful job in taking care of their assets. And if there's no apartments, they will continue to develop this and make it the best they can. I think the thought is, how do we? I think the thought is, how do we take it to the next step? And collectively, the industry is doing this. So I think they're just doing what the industry's doing, so.
So I'm going to ask some traffic-related questions. The first set of questions are for you, and then, and then I think I've got a couple for you.
Jonathan?
First, how many spaces, parking spaces are currently located on the site that you're looking at?
I think there's 440.
Okay. So 400, we'll, we'll take your number as gospel.
Don't do that, but it should be real close.
Loose gospel. And then if you build, how many external spaces, spaces outside the parking garage would be left? So I think it's on the south side that I see some that would be, that would remain. Do you have any idea how many of those would be?
Yeah, and I, yeah.
I mean, north side, I'm sorry.
Hey, I don't have all these numbers in my head, but. I was right. 440.
All right.
Right now, what we're going to be doing is, we're providing, we're going to provide 681 spaces.
The majority of which would be resident-only spaces?
420 would be residential. So we'll have 261 spaces available.
Okay.
For the retail versus the 440, but you still have the retail spaces behind the center, behind the.
You said 260 for retail? Is that what, I think, is that the number?
261.
Okay. Does that include those, the line of spaces on the north side?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a net loss of approximately 200 parking spaces for retail.
Yes, 180.
And in terms of.
But one thing we're doing, excuse me, one sec. One thing we're doing, the mayor is, we're presuming Snuffers moves away, and they would probably take somewhere, if you'd attend, they're probably somewhere around 60 or so. So we're 180 to less 60, so about 120 short.
And you're talking, we're talking about 260 units in the complex?
Two, I'm sorry, 280.
280, okay. I'm guessing at 1.5 people per unit, you're looking at somewhere between 300, 350 cars that would be parked in, that would be residential cars? Would be, that be a safe guess?
In the garage, well, there'd be 420.
400, okay.
I mean, a one.
420, yeah. Have you done any, do you have any data that shows, and I know this is, this is hard in the time we're living in right now, any data that shows the trends on going forward of people teleworking versus return to work?
Well, they absolutely are. And the trend is, I know we have maybe a parking expert here, the trend is to less parking for residential and then do the co-parking. We haven't done a parking study on it.
I'm not talking about parking, though. I'm talking about the people. How many of these, do you have any projections on how many people will be able to stay home and work versus people that will still have to, at some point, return to an office and be traveling?
Well, I think they have different, it's, I would say, the majority of the people are staying home at least one day.
Okay.
Majority. I would say, you know, we're probably 20% work from home. And what we're doing is, we're expanding our co-work space.
Right.
So we started with the typical, we have a little office with a, with a booth and three computers, and that was it. I mean, now we're going to like 1,500 square feet. I mean, that's size this auditorium. I mean, and we're putting conference rooms and podcasts and open areas. So we are developing and expanding our co-work space so people can work here. And the amenities we put, I mean, we're putting Java bars. I mean, we're making it really convenient for everyone to stay home. So, Mayor, I don't have, I don't have any facts. I just know that we are building larger co-work space. They're filling them up, and we're making them bigger. I would say minimum 20%, but I would say probably close to 80% to 90% are staying home at least one day.
Okay. And at the 280 units, at 1.5 per unit, that turns out to be, how many total people living there?
Around 420. I'm sorry, it's, yeah, 420, yeah.
420, okay. 80% of that, I'm not sure what that number comes out to. So this is where I'm going to probably start to.
Well, I would say, Mayor, I mean, the numbers we're throwing out are guesses.
I understand, yeah.
So they're, they're not factual, but the trend is absolutely going, where more people are working remotely. Absolutely.
So where I'm going is the traffic study. I know that was a, a big point of discussion back in October. I think it's safe to say it'll be a big point of discussion coming out of this meeting as well. And I got to admit, I'm a skeptic of what the projections show. If we're talking about 80% of, of your, of your residents are still going to be commuting at least, you know, one, if not three or four days a week, or even five, I just, I'm questioning how that only adds 1% to the traffic numbers at an intersection that is already our busiest and most dangerous intersection, and that's not going to change anytime soon.
Sure. So I'll start by saying, the work from home, all that, it's so fluid right now that none of the traffic projections that we're doing account for any of that. The IT that I mentioned, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, that provides these data that we use, it's not updated, right? So we're, we're still living in, the average person is commuting to and from every day. So I'll start with that. I'll also say that one thing that is unique about this development that has been talked about a lot tonight is specifically in the PM or weekends, what have you, there's going to be trips that are taken by the development, right? Instead of me driving a half mile, a mile, two down the road, I'll just go to the grocery store on-site. I'll just walk there. So there's some trips that are taken in by the development. That is factored in. That is an IT standard. That is described in the report. The reason that the PM peak is only a slight increase is because, and, you know, hold the tomatoes at me for this one, but retail is a higher traffic generator than multifamily. That's, that's just, that's what the data shows. That's, that's what we use across the board across the country. Those retail trips are happening in the evening, right? People are going to Snuffers in the evening. So we're competing with what we're recognizing as retail traffic in the evening, when we're comparing existing to proposed. That's why you see the morning going up. And again, to address the 80% of the 420, not everyone leaves at the same time, right? That's why we study these over hours. That's why we studied this one over the whole day. That's why we do the projections as we do them, because there's mornings when I leave the house at 6:30 to get to the office, there's mornings where my daughter causes me to leave the house at 9:00 AM, right? So we're, I think we're all leaving, we're all doing things at various hours throughout the day, and we have to take that into account when we're doing these projections as well.
Dan, actually, with the stay-at-home model, actually, the, the traffic at the peak times is probably less than it would be if everybody went to work, because at 9 o'clock or 8:30, people are sitting there wearing their jammies and cooking coffee in the, in their kitchen rather than in their car going to work.
Sure, I get that.
So, and that, that'll fluctuate, because we won't be this way forever.
I get that. I'm just, I'm looking at it from the perspective of, you know, and this conversation that we're having in other, in other parts of city business, that this is, this is a, traffic-wise, it's a terrible location, and there's very little we can do about it to make it better, at least at this point. I think that's all I had for now. Anybody else have anything? Planning, P&amp;Z, any, any follow-ups or anything like that? Okay, Mr. Nelson?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
So I kind of have a thought here, maybe, maybe just to simplify it in my mind, and maybe for some of the people sitting here and watching, the last two years from an investment, what, have you guys been in an operating loss? Or, you know, say honestly, 2020, 2021? What did that look like, if you, if you feel like sharing?
Yeah, we did make money. Our revenues were down something like 40%. You know, it was really difficult for retailers, and, you know, that meant sometimes they weren't able to pay rent that month. But we did work with everyone, and we got through it. So, yeah, it could have been really bad, but we got through it.
Is this built, you know, bringing people closer to retail is, is really the, versus like building more shops? Is this more of a, you guys having the ability to attract, get leases from certain type of tenants where there's apartments already there versus, I mean, is the issue here, you know, you build some apartments and you get more foot traffic, like, obviously instantly, right? They're there. Versus like the, the organic development that's going around in all the different, you know, cities around Highland Village, whether it's apartments or homes? What's the thought? Is it, is it when you put in an apartment, there's, it's easier to maybe attract some of this? You're talking about future-proofing, some of the different retail that you're looking and bringing? Is that really just, hey, you build this, put $75 million in? And is the issue attracting retail to Highland Village?
Yeah, I feel like that's like a Dallas way, right? Jerry Jones, you put money in and people show up to the games. No, absolutely. There's a couple of layers to that, right? So at a fundamental level, what we're trying to accomplish with this is satisfying the current tenants' feedback, which is bringing butts to seats and increasing daily foot traffic, increase occupancy, right? So we think this does accomplish that. You know, without a doubt, this area has grown significantly, and I totally get the growing pains of the community. What we are thinking for this site, though, is a longer-term plan and maximizing the utility, I think, of the shops. Whole Foods, we own in the shopping center, and I think during COVID, their sales went up something like 30%. That's, in my opinion, the, the reason behind that is the, the growth we're seeing around the communities, people shopping, ordering, delivery, you know, that, that's definitely happening. But we, there's so much more for the center to go, based on our total retail portfolio and looking at metrics for a healthy shopping center. That's why we feel like we need to put our money where our mouth is and help them. Without a doubt, you throw a big project like this and make a splash, you know, I think the gut reaction is, we don't need that. But it, it does attract tenants to know that you have a landlord, an operator, an owner that are going to take care of, of the center. You know, the retailers are making significant commitments. These leases sometimes are 10, 20 years, you know?
You have a handshake agreement with AMC? Is that just a year extension?
I will say that's not done yet.
Okay, yeah, handshake.
You know, the world's crazy.
It's not a multi-year extension?
It would be a multi-year extension. But again, it's not done, and, you know, we'll try to do our best to get that done.
And is this in response to, if the AMC were to go away tomorrow, what's that impact on the shops and you guys?
Yeah, it's, I mean.
And I'm, and I'm talking about just, you know, money, right? Like, what would that impact look like?
Yeah, I'm not sure we can disclose the economics of that particular deal, but it would be, you know, over a million dollars of impact. AMC is our anchor. You know, it was developed in intent to drive a significant amount of, of the foot traffic and, you know, sort of shore up the tendency around there. There are a lot of restaurants in that, you know, area. We have Mount Fuji, you know, Shoal Creek, Rockfish, which I'll get to in a second. You know, there's probably five, five or six restaurants there. You know, Dine and a Movie, that, that's pretty classic. But, you know, it's not all, it's not all great. I mean, we, we just found out in the past couple of months, right, Josh, that one of the restaurants is going to be closing in the next couple of months. So, you know, for, for theaters to be back, and like Josh was saying, you know, really successful first half of the year, you know, we can be doing more, and we're trying to do more. We're trying to play offense here, so.
Mr. Nelson?
What is Plan B if something happens to AMC if they don't renew the lease? I know that originally, a year ago, the thought was that AMC would not survive, so therefore there was a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. If by chance AMC does not renew their lease or if something happens, what is Plan B?
Yeah, I mean, best-case scenario is AMC stays on the path, right?
Worst-case scenario?
The, the backup plan would be to try to find a backfill. And, you know, I think, like Josh was saying, you know, look at the box office theater, volumes down. It's not very encouraging for new operators to take new space. You know, that, that's kind of the challenge of the industry right now. And again, this is a big footprint. You need to kind of find a backup operator for it to make sense. Alternatively, you are reconditioning that space, putting, you know, several million dollars into that. It, it would essentially require a full demo, you know, if not scrape the building. It's very rare to find that size of tenant, you know? And you're talking about a community of 17,000, 17,000 people, you know, that, that's like, you know, we see that across the street with the Walmarts and, you know, those big blocks are just difficult to lease. So you're talking about time, you're talking about millions of dollars, extra money into that, and you're kind of not really addressing, so what we're focused on, which is trying to deliver impact to current tenants. So absolutely, if we get that back, we will do what we need to do. That's what our client expresses to do, and, you know, Josh and the team will, will do something to get that done. But, you know, we need to absolutely consider the possibilities that AMC does not happen or three, four, 10 years down the road, they decide, you know, they don't want to be in the business anymore. That's just prudent business, so, yeah.
Mr. Nelson? Yeah, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead. You mentioned a restaurant going out of business. Are you able to say which one that is?
I don't think I will at this time.
Okay, that's fine. And one last question, sorry, one last question. Based on the construction timelines, we can assume that there's going to be quite a bit of overlap between text dot construction on 407 and 2499, along with construction of the building itself?
I, I think based on timing, it seems like that project scope will be maybe a little bit ahead of where our development plans would be. Absolutely, you know, the timelines are pretty close in sync, but I, I would look at that as a partnership to work with them to try to, you know, make sure we're not making the issue worse, you know? The fact when that gets, when that does get cleared up, you know, I think that gives us more flexibility to, to actually get off the ground there, too, so. Yeah, we can be flexible with timeline, for sure.
My final two comments. One, AMC, and I don't want to go down this rabbit hole, and I'm not opening this up for any rabbit hole that I'm about to sound like I'm going down. AMC's not your big problem. Order books is more of what you need to worry about. Massive square footage, people buy books online. So that's not your only challenge that you're facing in the future, but we don't have to go there. But my comment, and I want to make it very clear when I make this comment, that this comment does not echo any support for or against what I'm about to say, but Jared, to your comment about the apartments driving retail, without disclosing, there's a pretty successful shop concept that's a couple towns over to the west that I've been involved in from a banking perspective that has to the west. I'm sure your wife goes over there every now and then, that does have a multifamily concept attached to it. And I can tell you for a fact that it does drive retail. It, retail, the more established, the names, they look at the demographics, they look at the surrounding areas, and when they see multifamily, any type of multifamily sitting there, it's like it's goldmine. Now, that doesn't mean that I support this, not one bit, but that is a proven fact. So anyway, with that, I'm done.
Okay, last, last call. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for coming and answering questions in your presentation. To, to our residents, thank you for coming and, and being good listeners. This is a, in my opinion, this is a much better representation of what our city is about than what we saw in October. I really appreciate everybody listening closely and intently, and I'm sure we're going to have a lively discussion as this moves forward. And I want to emphasize, there is a process for this. Assuming that they decide to move forward, they will have to submit an application for zoning change first, that has a process that goes through. Then there is a process, if that were approved, that has to happen. This could take a, a long time. I would ask everybody to be patient, let the process work. I would ask everybody to be patient, let the process work, let city staff who do, do a fantastic job, let them do their job. And, you know, whatever happens will happen. I don't want to make any predictions or anything like that, but, but I just ask that we all be patient, and, and whatever's right will prevail. So thank you. That concludes our meeting. We are now adjourned.